Good afternoon. I hereby call this Agenda Review Meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. Quorum of the following board members is present. Vice President James Montoya. Secretary Mindy Winslow. Lea Beth App. The Reverend James Irvin.
Here.
Dr. Tyrell Grooman.
Here.
Mr. Fashid Narimont.
Yeah.
Thank you all for joining us today. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although all members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by the use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate them. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. As a reminder, this is an agenda review meeting today. No action will take place today. First item on our agenda is public comment. We did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in the meeting notice. That'll take us to item three, the consent agenda. Board members, item A is board meeting minutes. Did anyone have any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to item B, Business Office Reports. Mrs. Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good afternoon, President Fitch, board members, Dr. Truheal. I would like to go over the budget amendments to begin with, and they are on page 18. We have two amendments today. The first amendment is to pay for the, move funds to pay for the increase in athletic stipends that was approved with the compensation plan. This was approved, this was a change to the compensation plan at the last minute, so it was not in the original budget. And I am taking, I'm increasing function 36 by 23,760 and decrease function 11 instruction by 23,760. And the second amendment, we are receiving more funds than what we had budgeted for SARS revenue. About 91,250 is what we're expecting. With that will be a bill of about 7,300 that function 41 general administration pays. And then I'm increasing function 11 by the amount I took from up above. 23,760 curriculum and development, curriculum and staff development, 3,000. And then I'm decreasing some local revenue by 57,190. That local revenue is our investment earnings. As I've been saying in previous meetings, we are not earning as much as in the past. Do I have any questions on the budget amendments?
Um, I, I would like a verification on the first one. I just want to make sure I under. I want to make sure that I'm understanding. I went back and looked at June when we did a compensation stipend thing, and I just wanted to make sure that that's what you were referring to, that that phraseology of last minute and not in the budget is.
Yes.
And I want to make sure this is not in addition to that.
No, it is referring back to that document that was approved in June.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a follow-up on that. It says 14 coaches receiving 1,022, receiving 500. Are we having 14, which 14 coaches, another word?
I can get you that information, or do you want me to name them online in the meeting?
Another next question I have concerning the same issue, it says, this stipends increase were decided upon the final four and not included the adopted budget. What, what that final four specifically means?
The final four? Final hour? Oh, so when I built the budget, I did not.
Yeah.
I did not include any increase in stipends, but at, near the end in, right before we adopted the budget, we had been looking at our TASB study. And they had suggested that we increase certain stipends. And so we included that. That was a change made in our compensation plan. But it hadn't, but it had not been built into the budget. The budget had already been prepared and was in published and ready to go when that happened.
Any additional questions before Ms. Barbara moves on?
Just simple assistance again, so late, he gives me. So what?
Well, I can answer that. I watch our budgets all throughout the year, and many times, especially with salaries, we start, we don't need as much as I budget. And so although I knew way ahead of time that this was over budget, that is not uncommon. We end up because because someone doesn't finish the year or doesn't start at the beginning of the year, when we end up, we don't need all the funds. Well, this time that did not happen. Did that make sense, what I just said?
Yes.
All right, I would like to move on to the investments, which can be found beginning on page 22. As I have stated, every month we are receiving very little. But interest rates are rising, and I am hopeful that we will see this begin to rise and receive more money in the future. Any questions on the investments? And I will now take questions on any other items you may have questions on, on my board reports?
I have, and this is just curiosity here. I mean, I'm not questioning it or anything. I'm just curious. The, the check to the Hudson Golf Team for 850, and see, it was on the 4th of February. So, and it's understood in travel costs. I just thought it was odd that we paid that their golf team. Do we often do that? Just curious.
I can explain that.
You might be able to.
It is entry fee for their tournaments.
Oh, okay.
Because when you have tournaments, it's a fundraising for that.
Wow, I didn't know it would be so fun. Okay, thank you. I figured you know. Thank you.
Oh, I had a question if we're talking about checks. There was a, a check for Angelina College. What was, what did we, what did we buy with that? Was that for students or something else?
Can you give me more information?
Check number, it's under, under alphabetical, it's under Angelina.
Tuition for higher education. We're talking about the.
Is that, do we have, are we paying tuition for somebody?
That would be for students. I, I'll need to look it up, but I'm, usually it's for CTE classes. Certifications.
We, do we have instructors from Angelina coming over and teaching with us, or they're, they're actually getting Angelina credit for their classes? Or CTE people? Cause it's, it's almost 15 grand. And I've never noticed that before this time.
Dr. Hill, do you want to address that, our relationship with Angelina College through our CTE program?
Sure, we do have an agreement with them. We do our CNA and phlebotomy. To the extent of the $15,000 expenditure, I would need to dig into that a little more. So I'm sorry, I do not have that answer at my fingertips.
So I am, I am looking it up.
You said phlebotomy and CNA are the current programs that Angelina College teaches that we have a relationship with?
We, we do, yes ma'am. I would just need to verify and ensure that it would, to, to Dr. Grooman's question about if it's an Angelina staff person, or if it's ours, I believe it's ours, but I would like to get a 100% affirmative before I said so, please.
Dr. Hill, if I may, both of those courses are taught by an ISD instructor for phlebotomy and the CNA program.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lusk. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lusk, how many, how many students go through the phlebotomy and the other course that you mentioned per year? Roughly, doesn't have to be exact.
I would say phlebotomy, this is our first year that we have it taught in-house. So this year we have about 25 to 30. It's a semester-long course. We're changing that next year though, to give those kids some more time to get that certification. CNA, it's about 15 to 20.
And then we'll grow those programs. So that's good. Great, great work.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions about the Business Office Reports? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3C, purchases over $25,000. The first item is Benchmark Education. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Fitch. Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Truheal. This is a part of Proclamation 2021. It's for our pre-K adoption. It's for materials that would not go into the classroom until the school year of 2122. The committee has been meeting regularly since October. I think they've met about five different times. We had representatives from across the district, three campuses that serve our pre-K classrooms, six pre-K teachers, some other curriculum assistant principals, as well as administrators, and this is the one that they have selected. You'll notice that it is both print and digital. It's an eight-year adoption, and it is in both English and Spanish. We had a couple of criteria set forth, print and digital being one of those, as well as English and Spanish and comparable resources. And so the committee is bringing this one forward for purchase. It's for a total of $68,400. That would come from our instructional materials allotment, or as we call our IMA funds.
And that will be able to be utilized by all the school districts, all schools.
All of the pre-K teachers. Yes, sir.
I was just curious, is this, is this is different from what we used to the past?
Yes, ma'am. We've been current, we've been using Frog Street.
Oh, okay. And also, does, is this going to include consumables for those eight years, or do we just?
Usually, yes, ma'am. If it's an eight-year adoption, and they do provide consumables every year, yes, ma'am, that we will acquire.
How many pre-K students? Sorry, this is Dr. Roman. Roughly, we don't have, have exact numbers.
I would rather not.
Just say, run this year, run what we have, and then we would project that, like, that's an average, you know? So it's about eight grand per year, because maybe yours, right? So then it gives us a cost per student.
Yes, sir. I'm getting you a number. Pre-K, it looks like there's a total of 203 current students. And typically TEA tells us to look at our first grade enrollment to predict pre-K. For, for whatever reason, I found that kind of curious. And so just for example, our current first grade enrollment is about 416. But currently we have 203 pre-K students.
This is Mindy. We're kind of down on that number, I think. I mean.
We are, yes, ma'am.
The three, mid 300s, okay.
We, we are absolutely, yes, ma'am. In fact, we've been brainstorming additional ways to increase that number. And we've currently been planning in the light of COVID, how to accommodate and to with our online registration process. We went live with that last year, so we don't want that to be an impediment as to the reason why. So we're looking at having some face-to-face sessions for our pre-K parents to come up and so that we can provide them with some assistance on our online registration process. But yes, ma'am. We, we do have some plans to do a different job of oh my goodness, advertise, get with some of our local daycares and things of that nature.
This is why phenomenal.
Cause now we really don't know. We don't know what normal is.
Any additional questions on the Benchmark Education proposal?
I have one question. It's really not so much about this benchmark, but I've had some questions in the community recently asking, when we put together a committee to review curriculum, I know the people, the, the teachers and the people from the areas, they're specialized in it. So what, what, how do you go about determining what that content's going to be? I'm just, I'm asking because I've been asked that so many times, and I thought maybe this would be a good place for it to be. Talk about maybe answer some of the community questions. Like, how do you look at the content and say, I want this one over that?
So we have a couple of rubrics that we've been using, especially when it comes to these proclamations. And there's just some criteria, and, and I'll tell you, it's just one that we've acquired and we've put one together for NISD. But we've, we've kind of branched out with other curriculum directors across Region 7 and asked what they use. So I hope this is answering your question. So there is about a three-page rubric. We do ask the committee members to at least evaluate two to three different resources. And so this is the one that actually came out on top for us. And there are some, like I say, some specific requirements, like for us as an ISD, we really wanted it to be both print and digital, especially in light of our Canvas and CSO from this year. But then more importantly, or equally of importance, is the bilingual factor. And making sure that it wasn't just like a one-to-one translation, but it was, it was truly genuine representative and what would enhance our bilingual program.
Okay, thank you.
I might.
You're welcome.
Oh, some of the things that we are looking, and 12 months ago, we would not have aggressively looked at the digital. If you look at our stance and where we were a year ago, but now that we have the technology, we have the hands-on with the kids, we want to maximize that. Whereas our neighboring districts that may not have a digital platform and that accessibility with kids and the connectivity, they may not entertain that curriculum. So a lot of it, even though we're looking at the adoption of whatever we're looking at, the value is, what is it in Nacogdoches here that we need that fits what we look like, what our classrooms and teachers have access to? Whereas down the street, they won't even entertain the digital side. And that's not a bad thing. It's just that they may not have a digital platform. And so a lot of that is guided by what we look like. And also what we might look like as we plan ahead. So as we're, this is an eight-year investment. So if it's an eight-year investment, this is a commitment to the board in saying that we are continuing to invest in that digital environment. And so that's why this is very conducive to the direction that we're going to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Right, hearing none, we'll move to item C2, Martin Construction. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Thank you, President Fitz, members of the board, Dr. Truheal. If I may, board, I'm going to recite some board policy. Boards, board policy, CH legal talks about the authority to purchase. And there's a disaster exception in there, which reads, "In the event of a catastrophe, emergency, or natural disaster affecting the district, the board may delegate to the superintendent or designated person the authority to contract for the replacement, construction, or repair of school equipment or facilities under Education Code Chapter 44, Subchapter B, if emergency replacement, construction, or repairs necessary for the health and safety of district students and staff." With that, I'll ask that direct your attention to page 81 in your board book, where you have a administration is presenting to you just some repairs that needed to be done to some of the school buildings before staff or students could return in a safe environment. This one here is Martin Construction. Martin did some work at the, at Brooksway and Jones, the ninth grade center, and like, with his high school in the Ag form. I'm going to attempt to share my screen with you all just to give you an idea of some of the repairs that Martin had to work on, as well as our own folks. Can you see my screen there? Okay, so this is just a small picture of a, of a large leak at Brooksway and Jones, if I recall correctly. This was one of the first incidents that happened during that winter storm that we had back in February. Going on Nacogdoches High School, this is over, classrooms over in the ninth grade wing that flooded as a result of busted pipes. Again, just some more high school pictures, again, as a result of busted pipes. If you've ever been at the high school, you come out of the commons, you see that wall there, classroom full of computers. This is a picture over to your right on the screen here of where they had to cut out about a two-foot, two-foot section of the whole drywall there to replace it because it was flooded out. When we, we talked about the gymnasium, Mr. LaRue and his, his staff last month at the board meeting talked about all the repairs around the district. This was another large one. This is Nacogdoches High School gym. They were attempting to dehumidify the area that had gotten wet in the competition gym. And we were not successfully doing so. So one of the items we're going to start, we're talking about in just a moment, is the leak finishers. So this is, this is what the gym looked like, the ninth grade center gym looked like as of last Friday, when we went in there. They have totally sanded down and started putting back the maple flooring on the gym floor. Again, another shot of the ninth grade gym. Unfortunately, board, we're still finding and still having damages come up that, that are, we believe are as a result of the winter storm. This one hit us last Friday as well. Was a pipe bust burst up there in front of the high school that impacted the 500 wing or the, the wing where the auditorium and the band hall are. And our folks at Plant Services, Ralph LaRue, Cindy Robertson, and those great folks are contracted out some plumbers to get out there and see how we can get this, this leak fit, fit, entire fixed. So back to Martin Construction, and I will stop sharing here. Back to Martin Construction, we're just, this work has been done by Martin Construction, it's been completed. It was for ninth grade center, Brooksway and Jones and High School in the Ag form for the amount of $27,490. I'll be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Mr. Martin, I'm just, I'm curious, more out of curiosity, when you look at this bill, it says rate of $520, that your mom, $520. Was there an estimate made on each one of these facilities prior to getting them to work, or did they just go and say this is what we're going to charge to do it, or?
Was there an estimate?
Was there an estimate on each one of these places that we needed to have this done, or was this just they came and said, this is what it'll cost us to do it?
Yes, sir. If you look on the very next page, the estimate there is, is right there for each job.
We don't have that.
No, we don't have that.
Are you going to have that in it?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, there. Okay, so I'll go over it, and we'll, we'll have it in your board book for Thursday, if that's okay, that pleases the board. For Brooksway and Jones, labor material was $520, ninth grade center, insulation of walls and pipes, new cove base, exposed drywall area, put cabinets back together, cut vents in faces of cabinets. The total cost for that particular one was $2,145. Ninth grade center gym, take down existing tiles and dispose of, install new ceiling tiles. East side of the gym, paint wall section below, that was $16,500. Nacogdoches High School, replace sheet rock in rooms 308, 301, hall office and offices of 308, prep and paint. New sheet rock, install, reveal bead between old sheet rock and new, that was a cost of $7,450. And then the Ag form, replace broken party board, pressure wash area and paint entire area around bathrooms. That was $875, which comes to a total of $27,490 for all of those projects together.
I see that, but I, I guess my confusion is, when you look at the amount, it says rate instead of estimate. So was that the rate that was agreed upon after the discussion took place of what needed to be done? That's, that's all I'm trying to find out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's the amount that was agreed upon.
After they discussed that and what needed to be done?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martin, would I be correct if I say it's very difficult to get estimate for those kind of damages? You have to work on, because you might find more and more and more, so that the question, or maybe I'm answering Mr. Montoya, is, is very difficult to give an estimate. Because the more you dig, the more you find out something, something's wrong. So it probably would be the total cost of this.
Yes, sir, agree. Came out and looked at these, each one of these projects, each one of these areas of damage and did an estimate and, and said, hey, this is what it's going to run, this is what it's going to cost.
Mr. Martin, I might add, President Fitch and myself actually walked the high school. And it changed within 24 hours that we were there. They had only taken two foot on one side of the wall. They tried to air it out, and then the next time, the President Fitch and the board saw photos, sheet rock was removed on both sides. So you're absolutely correct, Coase, is that, that they'll try to do what it does, and if it doesn't work, then they've got to move to the next step for safety and mold and all the things that we want to do to prevent from, keep our kids and our staff safe. So it does, it's a moving ball. But I will tell you, there was an image in there, and I hope that the public can see. It was in the gym. That is duct tape and baling wire at its best. Because you could not find a dehumidifier that night to eliminate that damage. And for our custodial and our maintenance to come in there and do that masking, if you look at that image, those are actually blowers that have been turned upside down, and they're facing out of the plastic. So the innovative nature of our maintenance and custodial crew to come up with something so innovative. And it's one on the right with the green, that's actually using the reverse process. And it's one on the right with the green, that's actually using the reverse process of what those blowers are supposed to do. So it's actually sucking the moisture and blowing it out of the areas that stint. That's something that President Finch and myself were able to walk, and she was very impressed with the innovative, innovative nature of that. Unfortunately, it did eliminate a lot of the water damage, that quick response that we did there. So, but I wanted to touch base on that, on that amazing effort from our, our, our crew.
Almost, Mr. Montoya, I almost take the clock and change the horn.
I understand. I guess I'm just, my confusion is rate versus estimate. You know what I'm saying? It's like, is that a set rate that they gave us to do that?
Yeah, I think that's just the template.
Because I'm used to doing, looking at something, giving an estimate, and then with the knowledge that it may cost more or less depending on what they find. And that's, that was just for my clarification.
I think I've got a comment and then a question. And, and my first comment, we'll start with the positive, and that is, I am really pleased that, that Martin Construction was able to come out and get this work done so quickly to get our students and our staff back in those areas. I know from personal experience, getting, getting construction work, plumbers, anything done right now, there is a long list. So I appreciate Martin for, for putting us at the, I guess, the top of that list and, and getting this done for us. I understand all the work is complete, Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
That's, that's wonderful. The second question will just be quick. It's, 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 I'm sure you're anticipating this. It's what is our insurance outlook on, on getting reimbursement from insurance on some of the damage expenses that we're experiencing?
I was, thank you, President Fitz, was anticipating that question, and that is something that Mrs. Barbara staff are working with, our insurance carrier at this time. We don't have a definite answer, and like I said earlier, we're still finding areas of damage to submit to our insurance provider.
May I add to that as well?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We also, since we were declared a disaster area, we will be eligible for FEMA funding, but they will only come in after our insurance. And then they will cover seventy-five percent. The twenty-five percent that we have to match with, we actually can use donations, which we did receive donations along the way for that twenty-five percent match. So I believe we will may be made for the most part whole in this.
Wonderful. And Ms. Barbara, is the plan here to, to, I don't, I don't think I see it. Well, they're saying, it does say, it says that this is going to, we're going to pay this first upfront, and it's coming out of our plant services budget, correct? Not our, not our fund balance?
That is correct. I'm not, I have not done a budget amendment yet for it until we know more information and exactly what and from where we will be getting funds.
Okay. Well, and that makes sense. So instead of, instead of potentially doing multiple, you're just going to come to us at the end and possibly do one budget amendment to, to make sure plant services is made whole in this and not?
Yes, that is correct.
Hampered.
Right. We, plant services should not pay for the bulk of this in other, other means.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I kind of had my head wrapped around that. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, this is Dr. Drummond. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When we do contracts like this, do we just have a routine, there's a deadline, like number of days to finish? Or how does that work? Is the routine contract like this, is there any kind of number of days to have it delayed by this day? Or do we custom do each contract?
There's, there's sort of custom depending on the, the amount of damage, how fast something can, how fast it could dry out in this particular case. So it, it is just kind of a custom deal. And also the availability of the contractor and their subcontractors.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking that question is to ask this question. So is something still ongoing and we're in star testing? Do we have the ability to stop the construction so that the students are not interrupted during star testing? That's the real impetus of what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We do. In fact, we take that, we take, and, and, you know, again, kudos to Mr. LaRue and his staff. And takes into account before putting projects together, our workers on the ground, whether our students are in the process of, of testing.
Any other questions regarding the Martin Construction information? All right. Then we're going to move to item C three, Elite Refinishers. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, President Fitz. Board, you all just saw the photographs of the ninth grade center gym. This, this is a sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars is what it's going to cost to replace the maple flooring. What they're doing is they're demoing, they're demoing all the water damaged area. They are sanding down a lot of the floor to the bare wood. And then they're going to replace a lot of sections with maple flooring. They're going to paint it and make a few, few changes, modifications to from what it was. And it will be finished up. Be happy to answer any questions.
Want to say, we just repainted that, that gym floor this past summer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just for a frame of reference for me, what was the cost when we had that floor refinished and painted?
Right around eleven thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LaRue. Any other questions on this item? That winter storm played a lot of havoc with us, that's for sure. Okay, we'll move to item C four, Purchase of District Police Vehicle. Ms. Barbara?
Good afternoon again. I'm bringing to you the purchase of a police vehicle. This vehicle was budgeted to be replaced as part of the ongoing replacement of vehicles. This is the only vehicle we're bringing to you at this time. We are recommending that Dodge City be awarded the bid for Durango Pursuit.
All right, Ms. Barbara, I'm sure you're anticipating this question. Were our local vendors given the opportunity to bid on this vehicle?
No, none of our local vehicles deal in police vehicles.
Can you say that again?
No local vendor. We do, do not have any local vendors that will sell police vehicles.
Oh, okay. But they were aware, I mean, are those vendors aware of that fact that we need police vehicles? And if they wanted to try to help us out, bid for them or not?
No, we have never been able to get local vendors to participate in the police vehicle purchase.
The emergency vehicle from ambulance to fire trucks to police cars have a specific criteria that need to be matched on. And it's pretty much cost prohibitive for any other fleet vehicle that doesn't specialize in that area to go there. So we, we went through the process and found somebody that would get that. Now, is this also part of a grant?
No, it is not.
A part of the grant, okay.
And my other question is, we're paying thirty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-four. Does that come with, already with the radio or is all that stuff that we have to install for a police vehicle? Or does it come already ready to you just get in and drive?
I am not absolutely sure. It covers everything, but it, it has been bid with a police package. I don't know if there's any smaller items that have to be added.
I think the very last includes all the very details of that.
It comes with extra brakes, extra heavy-duty brakes and a lot of customization for, for the people. But something I wanted to say, or at least, or at least confirm, no local vendors are selling us this, but Mike Ferry services all of our police vehicles. Is that correct? So we're putting our service in his hands.
Yes.
So that's what we can do. So we are doing something and they're helping us in that manner. So we, we appreciate Mike Ferry's Dodge doing that for us, taking care of our police vehicles.
Ms. Barbara, is this adding a vehicle to our fleet or is replacing a vehicle?
It is replacing a vehicle.
And can you give us the details on the vehicle that it is replacing?
Just a moment. Okay. It is replacing a two thousand eight Dodge Charger.
Sorry. So, so the fleet of vehicles that we have for the police department, all officers have access to every one of those vehicles or are there assigned vehicles, a different vehicle that fits schools?
I can't, I can't answer that. I don't know. We have seven, it looks like we have, oh, hold on, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. If I'm counting those up right, nine vehicles. I'm not sure if that includes the truancy officer vehicles or not. They, truancy used to be under the police department. So I'm not sure if that includes them or not.
And, and every vehicle that we're replacing is the oldest vehicle on the fleet. Is that correct?
In their fleet, yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions regarding?
Yeah, I, when we say we have nine vehicles, I don't believe all of those are functional or, or used. I, I believe I've seen repeatedly a car that's stored behind TJR at the Student Service Center. And also there's one kind of dead in the water, water, ICTE by the greenhouse behind the high school. So I'm not sure of the age of all of those cars and the number of miles on those cars.
Can I, can I, can I interject on that one?
Yes, Dr. Young, you've got the floor.
Yes, the vehicle that's behind Student Support Services is an unstriped district vehicle that was transferred from the police department in the last rollover from vehicles to us. For us to add to our fleet, we have a homebound teacher that uses that vehicle on a daily basis to see her students. So thank you very much, Police Department, because that helps us out hugely.
That's the similar situation for the CTE vehicle, Dr. Drummond, that you mentioned. That was passed over several years ago in our law enforcement program, uses it to practice traffic stops. And then it's also a vehicle that our automotive students can work on.
I also think some of the older ones given to truancy officers.
Thank you both, Dr. Young and Mr. Lust, for letting us know that. That's, it's very nice to know that those vehicles are, even when they're past their daily usage with the police department can, can still be put to good use in other ways.
I found out that a radio and tent, window tint and wrapping will need to be added to the vehicle.
If I could go a little bit further, just to explain with our vehicle, ours ended up actually being a CTE project. The vehicle was taken over to CTE where the kids got to rotate the tires, change the oil, de-stripe it, take the lights and stuff, the radio out of it, and prepare it for civilian use. They actually then reinstalled the, the Nakadota ISD sticker on the side for us as well. So we integrated CTE in the process of transferring that vehicle over to Student Support Services for our use.
That's wonderful.
President Fitz, if I may, I believe a question was asked earlier about the, the vehicles being assigned. And the, the answer is yes. Each, each of the vehicles for police are assigned to each officer.
Do we have a take-home policy for officers to take the cars home, which would be similar to what the city, city Nakadota Police Department does?
I will have to research that, but I believe that our, our police department do take their vehicles home. However, I believe most of all of them live within NISD boundaries. But I will have to follow up with Chief Murray.
Mr. Martin asked this question ten years ago, and it responded, there are some hours.
Right.
Absolutely. Yes, and that, that's a good point. I know with the city's protocol, which I would assume that if, if we are doing that, our policy would be much the same. And that is, that means that it reduces the response time if you get called out after hours and you are expected to, to respond. And anytime you're in that vehicle, the coat of blue takes effect and you're, and you're expected to respond. So I, I personally support that policy and was just curious if, if, if we, if we had that same policy here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I just have another question. I don't know. I guess I'm full of questions today. But, okay, this price that we got, thirty-seven, six hundred and twenty-four dollars for the unit. The other bid, the next bid came in at forty thousand five hundred and seven. Did that bid include already a radio in the vehicle and stuff that needed to be put in or not? Or was that just the same, they were getting the same thing that we're getting for thirty thousand or thirty-seven thousand? We were getting the same thing for forty thousand.
I might add something to this. Depending on the municipalities that you're in, for instance, in some areas, you may not be able to tint your windows. Others, the wrap that will have to go, it's unique to Nakadota. Matter of fact, we follow the same, same look of the Nakadota Police Department, whereas some school districts have their own logo, their own look that they have with it. When you're dealing with also dispatch and communications, you also are dealing with a whole different set of dilemmas that you're looking at. So the, the items that you're seeing that are there, you might be seeing a difference in price. Might, might be because you've got a better suited up motor, it's got all the different things to it. It may even have a different wheel package, it may have a sports package. So a number of things can play into the prices that are there. But the dynamics that you're looking at, the tinted windows, for instance, I've seen several police departments that you don't tint the windows at all in any of the officer vehicles. Whereas in others, you do the same thing with the, with the wrapping and, and also with the communications that you have.
We also, police department requests some phone or communication system, which is would be connected with the community, with the total community, like Sheriff Department, Police Department. And that's very, very expensive. So I imagine that does not come, I must provide. And I believe we have an extra.
I'm seeing in these, it's calling a head radio face plate. I am assuming that they are, that that is just a place to put a radio. I am not an expert.
You are correct.
Thank you.
And I may respond, Mr. Doctor. As far as the Max Perry, the only repair they do is changing all bodywork and things like that. Because the rest of those equipments are insured by the company that they have, they have to have that specialized.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll move to item C for, C, I'm sorry, D. We're all the way to D already. Let's get, sale of delinquent tax property. Mrs. Barbara.
Well, we haven't seen the, one of these in quite a while, and suddenly we have six properties that our taxes have not been paid on them. And what we are doing is releasing them so that they can be purchased and be put back on the tax roll.
All right. Any questions about this item? Ms. Barbara, what I may ask, not, not for this Thursday, because I don't think you'll have time to do it, but maybe for next month's meeting, a report on our delinquent tax collections. So we can see how we're doing and how our, our law firm is doing in that area. If you would get with the appropriate folks and get us that information for next month, it would be greatly appreciated.
I will do that.
Have to stay, wait, still under consent agenda or can it?
Yes, it is under consent agenda. Any additional questions or comments on the sale of delinquent tax property? Hearing none, we'll move to item E. It's the second reading of our TASB policy update. Do we have any questions? This is a second reading. Hearing none, we'll move to item F, submission of hybrid instruction waiver to TEA for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Hill.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board members, Superintendent Trivio. You'll find this item on pages five ninety-two and five ninety-three. So this waiver will allow us to limit our number of students on campus while we are doing STAR testing. So this particular waiver is for grades K through eight. And I will remind you, Board, that back in August, actually, it was at the August seventeenth board meeting where we approved a waiver called the, for NHS for grades nine through twelve. It was the forty percent campus hybrid instruction. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that that allowance was already made for them under that waiver, and this is just a waiver that just came to us from TEA. And so we've had several administrators inquire about this possibility. And as far as your attachment is concerned, Dr. Corley has been working with the campus administrators, and you will see the particular numbers of on-campus learners and then the number of testers that will, this will be applicable to for STAR. And then it lists specifically the dates that this is going to apply to or for. And then why, and basically it's so that we will have enough administrators. There are a lot of testing accommodations that we do allow for. Sometimes it's one-on-one, so while we continue to practice our health and safety protocols as well as social distancing, we feel it's in our best interest that for some of those grade levels to have asynchronous learning opportunities on those STAR testing days. Do you guys have any questions?
I have a question, Dr. Hill.
Sure.
And maybe it's answered here and I'm just not reading it carefully enough. And so this is a number of students we currently have that were learning on campus. And then from that, how many would be testing? Do you happen to know how many virtual distance learners we still have? I know that a lot returned to face-to-face at the new semester. How many would you guess we still have out there?
Great question. I would have to do some quick math. I get an enrollment report. Actually, may I send you a report that I receive every Monday that has both our on-campus and virtual learners? May I send that to Ms. Anderson? And that way she can forward it to you. It, I will tell you, it will only be for the elementary campuses. It'll take me a little longer to get it for the middle school and the high school, but yes, ma'am, I can, I can do that.
That would be fine. And mainly, I was kind of curious to see how our community is responding, you know, feeling comfortable about our protocols and stuff to send their children. Um, also in light of that, those who are still doing distance learning, will they be then required to come to the campus to test?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and parents are aware of that?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. Now, I do believe there's a little bit of flexibility with TEA. I believe the, one of the last to the administrator addressed, the virtual, the existing virtual students are the ones that may not have to take it. But of course, since we want the data, we would inquire with the parents and have them come to us to test.
And finally, when we began the school year, remember how we had the gradual, I can't even remember what they called it, but how they gradually.
Slow start, yes, ma'am.
Slow start. But at that time, those who weren't under the slow start, like say we were only taking the fourth graders and you got a second grader. If they wanted to be there, we were required to find a place for them. Do you remember that?
I do, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm wondering, I'm wondering, do we have to do the same thing for these non-testers who then are being told to stay home and do virtual learning? I'm trying to think about how parents who are now going to have a hardship what to do with their children.
I have not had that question come to me directly, so I appreciate that point that we can begin thinking as an administrative team on if that were to happen, what can we do about it? Thank you.
I might add, Dr. Hill, with regards to rationale earlier in the year, we had no virtual presence. There was nothing there. We hadn't even had the devices that had arrived to give to the parents and the connectivity that we have with the hotspots. What this is going to allow us is an opportunity even for our families that don't feel comfortable with their kids coming back to school by submitting this in, this waiver in allows us to just bring back students that are testing. So the first portion of it is for the confidence of those families to come back and test. For the confidentiality and this, and the, if the test continues, because we still don't know even if the STAR test, it may change between now and then. But the key is, is having that small group. Now that we have devices, now that we have connectivity and we have it across the board, then we would at that point be going virtual for those students that would not be coming back to school. And so those families now have tools to utilize. For instance, we've had some school districts that when they had their devices, they were not, it didn't, it didn't matter. They, they couldn't come back to school because they had devices. They gave everybody the devices and said we're shutting down the school. What we're trying to do is protect the environment of the testing. When, if and when the state decides to move forward, right now it's scheduled to happen, then we can maintain that. Our obligation there is also for our families that are opting virtual only and ensuring a safe environment that's controlled so that they can test in very small areas across and spread them across the campus. So we don't, their confidence would be in being, in being able to send their child to administer the test. But once again, I'm still monitoring to see what's that's going to happen. I've talked to President Fitch about this a few times, and we don't know what the legislators are talking about when it comes to the STAR testing and the information that, that they're wanting to collect for that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that our priorities are this, you know, that those who still don't feel comfortable but need to be testing, we're going to make it so that it is safer and they feel, I understand all that. I'm, I'm really, I was just wondering if the state, like it did before, is telling us that we though have to oblige any parent who says, no, I'm sorry, I have no way of monitoring my child at home. And I have to put up with them.
I'm not hearing that language. Dr. Hill and I participated with the commissioner on this last call. We're not hearing that this time around. I think it's because the devices are out, everybody has their, their items and the connectivity. So we're not hearing that, but you know, the closer we get to testing, that may change. So we've learned to adapt to meet the needs of our families. And so we will definitely adapt if, if that needs to be the case for what we're looking at.
So I think this is a good thing. Education is, we're supposed to provide learning environment, but we're also supposed to provide a testing environment, and that's what we're doing. A very strict testing environment, and this is important for the kids to feel safe, the parents feel safe, and for them to do their best performance or their best to their ability on the testing. And testing is learning.
So I have an observation. This is Mindy. Currently, students on campus at the middle schools are six hundred and fifty-four and five seventy-nine, but the student numbers requiring testing are seven hundred and twelve and six sixty-three. So you're increasing your student load on those two campuses. Is that what I'm seeing?
Ms. Winslow, thank you for that question. I believe it's because of the duplicate, there's duplicated students, if that makes sense, because of the number of tests. So I think that's why you see an increase of, of numbers. So I'm not sure that I answered that your question, but that was a point I wanted to make. So ask it again if I didn't answer it.
Well, so now I have another question. I don't understand duplicating students.
I, I think it had to do with the number of tests that are taken.
The number of tests, so one child could take, retest.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It is a great question. No, it is a great question. And so just one of the things maybe to remember is, of course, you know, I want to say it's like eighth grade social studies. So eighth grade is the only, they'll take all the others, but there's no other grade level at the, at the middle schools that take eighth grade social studies. So you could have an eighth grader from a duplicated number that would be in reading, math, and then social studies. And then so like sixth graders take reading and math, seventh graders take writing in addition to reading and math.
So this is not, the difference in numbers, it's not including those who are doing distance learning. That's what I thought. That's what I thought. I thought maybe that was the testers number, but including distance learners.
And I can clarify that just to make for certain. Dr. Corley, I don't know if you're on and can provide a little more clarity?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here looking at the actual numbers that we got from our campus testing coordinators. And so the difference in those two numbers, like I'm going to use McMichael for example. The six hundred and fifty-four students that's listed there, that's how many we currently have on campus in, in the learning, on-campus learning environment. So when you see the increase to seven hundred and twelve testers, and that is going to include the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade on-campus students in addition to students that may still be remote learners that we're asking to come to campus.
Okay, so it is person to person. I mean, you're matching apples to apples.
Yes, I apologize. I misunderstood the, the numbers. So Dr. Corley, thank you so much for that clarity today. And thank you, Ms. Winslow, for the clarifying question.
The, the one dilemma that we're going to run into that goes directly with Dr. Hill's talking about this number test is the one thing that we have no control over is what does the retesting day look like? That throws a whole new, a whole new, so we want our parents to be aware. We will set specific days for testing, but depending on if a child is absent and has an opportunity to retest that test, that may change the schedule. But we won't know that until we get to the actual day of the test. So when Dr. Hill's talking about individual tests, those individual tests, if I have three tests to take, I've taken two, but I missed one. Another student has taken one to miss two. Those in their time, the three hours, so you can only take so many at a day. We're going to be doing some finessing to really adjust that. And this year, more than ever, when it comes to this academic drive, we're going to have to be very, very, work on our communication with our families, but also make sure that our parents understand that it's going to have, have a little more leeway for our families, because it goes back to, on this after your question, as a family, if my child is not testing, that means my child's not going to school for two days, possibly three days. They'll be virtually connected. Yes, the answer is yes to that, and we won't know that until we get, so we're going to get hard, fast dates for the test. But what we don't know is when we get to that point, what are our number for retesters that are coming in? So that, to, to Dr. Hill's point, the number of tests, that's what plays into on how many more kids will have to come into Dr. Hill's.
That's where communication is going to be so important.
Absolutely.
These parents, as soon as they can know, know, because some of them, both of them were, you know, they're going to have to like write. For me, that would be a, that would be a disaster when I had kids on all different campuses. So I mean, it is something to think about, because now I have to understand that one too.
Any additional questions? From the waiver? Hearing none, we'll move to item G, consideration of resolution extended, extending depository contract for funds of independent school districts under Texas Education Code, Chapter forty-five, Subchapter G, School District Depositories. That may be the longest one ever. Ms. Barbara.
This is our final extension for the depository contract with, with Bankworth South. We are allowed three two-year extensions to our original contract with them, and this is the final one. So I'm bringing that to you to be renewed for the twenty-one through twenty-three biennium.
Any questions?
So does that mean that next year we go out for bid or something, or just have to do it, an agreement with them again?
No, we have to, it's called, I believe, an RFQ.
I did, yeah.
And that will be in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. We're going to item H, certification of unopposed District Four candidate for the May first, twenty twenty-one election. Dr. Trivio.
Well, the, the District Four race for the May first, twenty twenty-one election is unopposed. NISD is responsible for having the official ballot prepared, therefore must certify in writing that the candidate is unopposed, and the governing body, which is the Board, must meet and accept the certification. The next step will be to issue an order declaring the District Four election canceled and the unopposed candidate elected as of April fifteen, twenty twenty-one at the board meeting that we have in April. A copy of the order must be posted on the election day at the polling location.
Any questions? Congratulations, Dr. Roman. Item I, election services contract with NACADOTIS County. Dr. Trivio.
Well, first and foremost, we appreciate this relationship, first and foremost. NACADOTIS ISD contracts with the NACADOTIS County for election services for the Board of Trustees election. The county provides valuable services that include all equipment, rental accuracy, testing and preparation of electronic voting equipment. They train their election workers, tally the election results, and post the election reports. For the twenty twenty-one election, early voting and election day voting will be conducted at the NACADOTIS County Courthouse annex.
Any questions regarding our contract for election services with NACADOTIS County? Thank you. And that will bring us to the end of our consent agenda. The next item is action item A, consideration of bid for Thomas J. Bresk Abatement Project. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch, Board, Dr. Trivio. As Mr. Leroux and his staff were fixing some of the winter weather leaks, they just, they discovered what they thought may have been.
some type of asbestos in our schools and had it tested and has come back positive. And now the administration is recommending the removal of, of that material. The administration is asking the board to approve up an estimated $42,961. We're, we're asking the board to approve a, a total project cost not to exceed $50,000 on this project. It will cover both the Davis Gym piping on the boiler installation and also the crawl space of the main TJR building. Be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Mr. Martin, is it possible that we could submit this to our insurance company since it's related to the winter storm and bike breaks? Or are we on our own on this?
I, I'll defer that to Lisa, but I would think that we would be on our own because it was an existing issue prior to the water breaks, the, the water pipe breaks. The, the breaks only brought the issues to our attention.
That is correct.
Once again, the winter storm has given us a issue.
Yes. Keeps on giving curiosity. Does some company is going to do that, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay. No liability about the employees in case they get cancer or whatever.
No, the unfortunate thing with asbestos, though, that, that asbestos is always going to be belonging to Nacogdoches, no matter where it is. But the, the abatement, the individuals that come in, they've all been trained on how to actually do that, and they take care of all of that within their own industry, making sure that they've got the right trained folks, make sure the space is safely secured, that the bubble, safety bubble is, is all there for to maintain the safety, not just for their employees, but for our students that are happy.
Is there anybody opposed moving the side of consent agenda?
I don't necessarily.
Ms. Barbara, I see that this is again scheduled to come out of the plant services budget. Is that where you think it'll land? Or would we expect to see a future amendment in bringing it out of fund balance?
I will have to check and see how the, the plant services budget is faring before I would bring it out of fund balance. They, they tend to, in past several years, have had extra money left at the end of the year, and I'm hopeful that they will again this year. That would cover this.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for answering that.
I think, may I ask that, Mr. Ralph?
Yes.
Ralph, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am. Thank you.
On January 31st, I believe that's what I see, say capital improvement project. We worked on a bleachers at high school. Is that new competition gym or the, or the old gym?
Old gym.
Old gym? Okay. As far as the competition gym, do you have any problem with those seats or any damages or?
No, we recently did a little adjustment on several of them, brought in some new parts and caught up the bulk of the maintenance on them.
Do you think those need to repair is wear and tear or negligence or abuse?
Uh, I would put down most of it as abuse.
Okay. And it is normally on a northeast side?
It, it was all over the, all over the facility.
Any additional questions before we move on? Hearing done. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 1:19 PM. I'm going to say the board will not return to open session before 2 PM. Thank you, and give us just a second, Reverend, and we'll get you connected in. The board is now reconvening in the open session at 2:47 PM. Are there any requests for future agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion for our last action agenda item.
This is Mindy Winslow, and I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second?
All right, second.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Nirvont. On a motion by Mrs. Winslow and a second by Mr. Nirvont, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for being here. We'll see you Thursday night.